All right, um, welcome, everybody. It is 6:04. We have started our meeting. I am Chris Thornley, the Chair of the Board of Health. Today is December the 9th, 2020. This is the meeting of the Board of Health. Please allow me to confirm those members and staff participants that are present and can hear me currently. It would be Chris Davis, Mary Porter, Nancy Baral, Michael Hurley, and our Town Council Liaison, Enid.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, try to be respectful of everybody and not talk over everybody so everybody can hear the recordings and hear each other okay. I hereby declare that we have a quorum and this meeting is called to order. Copy the agenda and all related materials have been posted and can be found on the Town of Monroe's website for public inspection. This public meeting is conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B dated March the 14th of 2020, using go-to-meeting electronic conferencing technology. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone using the access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has unique participation information, so please be sure that you have accessed the correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access to this meeting shall... Access to this meeting using this technology is solely granted by the technology provider on first-access basis. It is not controlled by the Town of Monroe. While it is anticipated that we will not exceed this participation limit for this meeting, should it appear that we are approaching said limit so that any member of the public is denied access to this meeting, I, Chris Thornley, as Chairman, shall reserve the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at a later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. Please take notice of the following. Regarding a remote electronic public meeting, this meeting is being conducted in real time. This meeting is open to all public people. The...that any member of the public may listen or view to this meeting anonymously. That this meeting is being recorded and while we may ask you to mute your microphones unless recognized to speak, that anything you say, do, or is displayed on your screen may become part of the meeting. That the recording shall be posted to the town's website within seven days. That the recording shall be made available to the public within a reasonable amount of time in Town Hall or upon written request. This meeting shall follow standard parliamentary procedure. However, again, I ask all participants to follow these rules in addition. Please mute your microphone as to reduce background noise as much as possible. Please speak with respect to each other and on occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. The use of the chat feature is prohibited and will not be considered during the meeting if in use. As set forth on the agenda, this meeting will feature public participation. However, at this point in time, I have not received any written comments from the public between us and the dated agenda was posted at least one hour before the start of this meeting. So with all of that fun stuff being said, thank you again for everybody for coming on board. And at this time, we, again, as I stated, do not have any public participation at this point in time. So we will go ahead and move down the agenda to item number C or letter C, excuse me. Approval of the meeting minutes from our last, which is November the 10th of 2020. Okay, so, uh, was that Mary?
No, it was not.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm fine.
Okay, um, so I will motion to approve minutes from the last meeting. Okay. Okay, um, and Mike Hurley, your vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Davis?
Aye.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, minutes are approved unanimously. We will move on to the third, uh, excuse me, the fourth item, Director of Health Discussion. We'll talk a little bit about the Health Activity Report. Please take it away, Nancy.
Okay, um, as you can see from the report, again, a lot of septic work has been going on. We've been very, very busy. Or actually, my sanitarian's been very, very busy out in the field. If you look about a third way down on the report, line item eight and nine, you'll see in seven, you'll see complaints listed and we do have an increase in the number of complaints that are coming in regarding COVID violations, specifically restaurants, operators, or customers not wearing masks. So we've been following up with those. We did wind up sending out one order so far, but other than that, uh, we've been able to work with our operators to get compliance.
Nancy, can you just say what that means? You have sent out orders?
Oh, yeah. So what happens if, uh, if upon an inspection we find that there's a violation of the governor's orders essentially concerning mask-wearing or customers coming into a business and not wearing masks specifically or maintaining social distancing? What we, what we do is we try to work with the operator in the restaurant, you know, going over the, uh, the governor's orders and why they're required to enforce social distancing in their establishment. We, we provide them with our public health message. And so then generally, the operator buys in and they realize the importance and why we're doing this and we don't get a call back, you know? We don't get, we don't get any more complaints. We'll do a follow-up inspection and if we see that there's, there's no troubles, then that, that closes out that complaint. But we had one situation where we got a number of complaints and, um, we had to, uh... The operator was just not compliant and what we would, what we did is we issued an order for correction and had it delivered by a sheriff. It was right before the, um, it was right before the Thanksgiving holiday, actually. So it was, it was contentious. But in the long run, they complied and they did what they had to do and we're doing a few re-inspections to ensure that, um, that what we've ordered them to do is corrected essentially.
Thank you.
So was there any other questions concerning the activity report?
Nope.
Nope.
No, everything looked really good to me. Obviously, it just, uh, you guys obviously have quite a few of the, uh, you know, well inspections and soil permits and all that kind of stuff. You guys are moving along quite well.
Yeah, there's a lot of field work there. And it makes it difficult because, um, you know, we have to make certain that, you know, we will, we want to provide the best service that we can in our community, especially when people want to add a room on, onto their house or convert a basement into a living space. And so, um, and now that people are home more, you know, there's a lot more of that work that comes in for us to review and work with them to, uh, to approve. And unfortunately, it falls right in the middle of all the other work that's needed to be done by the department. So I can't really rely a lot on my sanitarian to help out in these other areas because he's just totally overwhelmed in the field work, so. So that's pretty much it for that. Moving on to the Revenue Report. Let's see. We are generally on target. We have, uh, our restaurant fees yet, uh, annual fees are yet to come in at the end of April essentially. So that's the $25,365. We are slowly getting our salon fees in. And so if you were to add that into the mix, you would see that we're about halfway there for our current projections. If you were to make that correction. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, what, um, the, the salon fees, I can't remember. Is there a date for them? Like they all go out?
Yeah.
Goes out in the spring?
Oh, yeah, they're coming in now, our salon fees.
Okay.
Yeah, and so that's like almost $6,600 that we're expecting. And then, uh, the end of April, we'll be getting the food service licenses, you know, fee licensing and licensing fees, fee license, anyway.
Something like that.
And so I just basically took the actual year-to-date of $22,287 and I just added half of the, uh, routine food service licenses. I figured $12,000 and I added the salon fees in and plus the month of December's septic fees and I came up with just about half of our proposed budget, so. Anything else?
No, I think we're good to go there.
It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Would you like me to move on to grant status?
Let's keep it rolling.
Okay, there you go. Everything is pretty much the same. The, um, the only thing that I have to report is on the, um... The Preventive Health and Health Services Block Grant. That's a high-blood-pressure grant. Recently, we were notified they were going to add $300, thereabouts, to our contract, which is nice. Somehow, uh, the state had extra funding for the grant and so they forwarded on to local health. So, and it's, it's interesting that they're giving us extra money to do this, but it's, it's not like you can really go out into the world and do screenings at the moment. So we have to figure out how we're going to spend that money in the spring and in the summer and this coming fall. I think that's, that's what it comes down to.
There hasn't been any further clarification as far as how they want us to do this. They want us, in essence, we're just going to kind of hang on to our boots at this point and...
It's winging it, you know? Some departments think that they might do Zoom calls, you know? And, um, not the best way to get the message out for something like this. So every department is trying, is struggling on how they're going to fulfill the requirements of the grant.
Nancy, are you going to report on the COVID test from yesterday or today or whenever it was? Not now, is that part of the report, I hope?
I, I can talk about that, yep.
If the Chair would rather have it later, I just don't want to forget that about asking about it.
Oh, no, sure, okay.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing that's happening here in Town Hall is that, um, part of our, uh, the grant for, under the DPA's Immunization Program, I think we'll be able to use funding for that. It will help defer the cost, actually pay for the cost of, of changing my office from a, you know, working behind a petition to actually solid walls. So as you can see, if you can see behind me, everything's kind of been torn down and it's one large space. And, uh, so we have a contractor and they're going to be building walls and a door so we'll have some private space to, to do contact tracing and other activities here in the office, so. So that's it for the grants thereabouts. Any other questions?
No, I think the, the grants were, uh, were all pretty, pretty straightforward, even from the last meeting with the exception of obviously, what do we do about the, the stuff we have to do with the public?
Right, yeah. We are, we are going to be hiring a nurse. She's hopefully will be here in two weeks. She'll be with us for about, um, about two years and helping us with basically all our emergency planning and her money comes out of the, um, the ELC Funding Grant, which as you can see is number four for $73,955. So that will be a big help for us here. She'll be working with Heather and, oh. But that's all, but I really have to report on the grants per se.
Okay.
Okay, on unfinished business, uh, like the one thing I'd like to talk about quickly is that over at Masic High, we had three different screening events. The last one was on Tuesday and I just wanted to see how many people passed through. I texted, I wrote, and hold on a second here, let me take a look.
If you don't mind, too, if you recall the dates and numbers from the others.
You know, I don't have those numbers handy, but I can get, get that information to you. But, um, yesterday, we had a throughput, which was, which was pretty darn good, of 180 cars or 180 people actually per hour. And they had four technicians on site doing nasal swabs. And, uh, we had, I think it was... I think it was close to 400 people we were able to process. I didn't write down the, the number here. And so it, it went very well. It's very cold to stand out there for five hours, but, um, it was really a great benefit to the community. I don't know if we'll be able to do it anymore. But Cessna 4, uh, this is actually a free service that the State Health Department was providing to our community. No one paid a dime for it, which was nice. But Trumbull, uh, just recently, uh, they have a setup over there from, which is behind the Health Department, White Plains Road. Is that White, White Pains, is it? Okay. Yeah.
P-L-A-I-N-F.
Yeah, and it's, I think it's with Griffin Hospital. Have this mobile unit that sits out there probably once a week. So if people want to be tested, they just need to go over there. So the State Health Department helped to facilitate that setup, um, which is nice. We hope to have that here, uh, Great Hollow Lake area, but they needed running water and we didn't have that down there. So they'd made the decision to go to Trumbull. But I know that Ken still wants to get a testing station set up here, uh, in Monroe, so. But I don't know if Cessna 4 is going to be able to do that because again, the state sees it as, you know, that it was a stopgap when, when our communities, Trumbull and Monroe and others, we didn't have a testing site nearby.
And I would assume that...
We don't know if that's going to go by the wayside or if they can come, you know, they can continue for the next few weeks. But there's also challenges with that because, um, Cessna 4, it's a Tuesday event for them and it's Wednesday when, when the kids come back into school. It's Wednesday is the day that people are home. So there's a scheduling problem there too, so.
And you have no news on the vaccine when it's coming to Monroe, correct?
Any other questions regarding that?
No. Anything about the vaccine, Nancy, coming to Monroe?
Chris?
Way too early?
Hello?
Oh, is it too early for the vaccine coming into Monroe? In other words, you have no knowledge yet?
Oops, sorry, I lost you for a minute there, everybody. Well, what was that again?
I was just asking about the vaccine. Do we have any knowledge as to when it's going to be coming to Monroe? Is it too early probably for that knowledge?
Uh, no, I'm going to, um, what I have from today's meeting with the Department of Public Health, let me read my notes here. Specifically, and this has been in the news, the hospitals and long-term care facilities and first responders are going to get the vaccine first. December 21st is the expected date. And this, the thought is that the long-term care facilities that CVS and Walgreens are supposed to take care of and vaccinate them. We'll see. First responders and, um, uh, like EMTs and such specifically, as well as clinic staff for COVID-19 should be able to go to our area hospitals and get vaccine. But it's all up in the air because the, uh, the, uh, the software, which is known as VAMs, is just starting to be rolled out now for health departments and others to access. And in order to sign up to get the vaccine, you have to go through that system. It's, uh, it's the CDC system. Local health departments, it's expected, will be receiving vaccine in January, February. And that will be Phase, uh, Phase 2 and it will be essentially the workforce in Town Hall and Board of Ed. And that's all that I really know about that. Health Department stressed today, a couple of other things I just wanted to go over with you, that health department's responsibilities, and they're shifting because we're, there are others that are coming on board, like hospitals that are helping us to vac, to vaccinate. So, but, uh, the Department of Public Health wanted to be clear that really, local health departments are responsible for outreach for vulnerable populations and that we do the employee coordinator, we're the, we're the coordinator to develop the roster and upload, uh, names into VAMs, which is the, uh, and their names of like, um, Town Hall workers, which would be in that second group, and Board of Ed workers into this database so that these individuals can be invited to receive the vaccine. So we'll be responsible for that. Also, health departments are responsible for coordinating mass vaccination clinics. And so, um, and that, and that is still unfolding. And it's, it's a difficult time of year to have a mass vaccination indoors. So how, you know, and drive-throughs, it's, it's very cold to stand out there and try to, um, to draw up vaccine and then, and then, uh, as people are driving through, to ask them to remove their coats. It's going to be, it's, it'll be a little nutty. So we're trying to figure that out now. But vaccine is really not going to be widely available to the general public until the summer or the fall. And health, sorry?
No, I didn't, I said, huh.
Yep, and really, uh, the, the message for local health has to be maintain social distancing, mask use, all the stuff that we've been saying all along. Yep. So that's, and, and a lot of this is, is, um, you know, there's a lot of frustration at the state and local health and towns in general because, uh, we, we didn't know that hospitals would be part of the mix and the solution and we didn't know that, uh, a lot of our pharmacies would be part of the mix and part of the solution because the plans that we've been working on for 20 years, things are changing rapidly. And I don't know, Chris, have you any new news at the hospital? How they're going to handle an influx of, um, first responders?
There, there hasn't been any kind of widespread communication, at least within Griffin at this point. Mary can certainly, you know, talk about if anything has happened over at St. Vincent's. But, uh, you know, we were actually all asked today as to whether or not we would be willing to take the vaccine, you know, as the first round, which should be, they were estimating either later next week or the beginning of the week after and you had indicated the 21st, which kind of falls right in line with that.
Yeah.
But as far as, uh, because I don't deal with the general public on an outward basis, obviously, I'm very inward in my role in the operating room. I, I don't know about what, if anything, they have decided to do as far as any kind of cooperative or collaborative effort with, uh, you know, with, with any kind of first responders of, um... I'm actually just looking at my email from work right at the moment.
This is Mary.
Do you guys have anything to go about, Mary?
This is Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead. Mary Porter, you there?
This is Mary, are we still connected?
Yep.
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
From the, from, just from the general aspect of things, each hospital has an emergency medical services coordinator. That's a position Ken Kellogg was in at St. Vincent's a couple of his jobs ago. So I would imagine, and this isn't something coming officially from St. Vincent's or Hartford Healthcare, but this is knowing that there's a person in that role in each hospital, I would imagine that that person is key in the coordination with community first responders and the hospital vaccination. I do know that officially from Hartford Healthcare today, what we were told is that when the vaccine becomes a bit, it's distribution plan basically well in place. We were asked a week or two ago, probably a couple of weeks ago, you know, who wanted the vaccine once offered to them. But basically, there are tiers of who gets vaccinated first. So those who are most likely to come in contact with those with COVID would be the first tier of recipients of the vaccine and it is not mandatory, but it will be offered at that level. The other factor that has to be remembered is the Pfizer vaccine, you get a second vaccine, a booster, three weeks later. The Moderna, you get your booster four weeks later. So along with them having to report through VAMs, through the Vaccine Administration Database, that first dose, they have to also keep in touch with everyone who receives the vaccine to have that appointment for the follow-up at the appropriate time according to which manufacturer's vaccine they receive. I imagine that, you know, a shipment that comes in is going to be all from one or all from the other at the beginning and then would be followed up with that appropriately. But, you know, it's, it's a complicated process and we're trying to make it easy, but it's complicated.
It's very complicated, yep.
So how many of you remember? The only vaccine I ever received in school was Rebella and it's because it came out when I was in third grade and I got a Rebella shot at school and the only reason I remember it is because I was just telling myself, "Don't cry, don't cry, don't cry, don't cry," and, you know, it's, it's going to be a similar thing. It's a new vaccine, but this isn't just for children. This is for the whole population and there's a hierarchy, sort of, of who needs to get it, whether it's those who are vulnerable.
In the VAM system, it's set up that the date that you receive your vaccine, it will automatically, you know, generate some sort of a calendar so that you know when to come back and, and an email will be sent to the, the patient essentially to come back on another day for their second dose. But what, and so for our health department in any case, what we're responsible for doing is setting up a clinic for town employees. And, um, you know, we originally were thinking that we would do a drive-through over at the Senior Center because we had a, a flu clinic there this past, it was early fall. It was very successful, but as the season has gotten colder, we're real, probably not a good idea. So we have since planned that we're going to take the show on the road and Heather and our, our part-time nurse and I and some CERT members, maybe MRC, are going to literally go to, go to the Board of Education or go to the Masic specifically or maybe, you know, go to maybe three of the schools and set up clinics there for, for, uh, school personnel. We'll have another one here in Town Hall for Town Hall employees. We just think it's a lot easier to do it that way than to do a drive-through and we still can maintain social distancing and all those other things. So that's where we are with the planning.
That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, anybody have any other thoughts or...
This is Mike. I just have a question. So, I mean, have you guys taken a poll of how many people are really willing to take this vaccine? So that way you have enough doses or don't, you know?
Yeah, well, we have no idea how many doses we're going to get at once. Through the VAM system, we let VAMs know that, let's say, we need, we have about 400 people on that list total that, that can take the vaccine. And I think it's maybe half that have agreed that they're, they'd be willing to take the vaccine. Others are either on the fence or no. So as I had two questions, in the VAM system, do you just upload everybody's name and then, uh, people that are interested in the vaccine will respond to the generated email saying they're going to, to get the vaccine or not? You know, I don't know how that works. So however it works, there's a number that pops up, which, uh, the number of vaccines that are required, which goes to the State Health Department and the State Health Department, using their wizardry, along with all the other health departments in the state, they then forward the ask up to the CDC and the CDC will only approve what they deem appropriate to the state of Connecticut and then the state of Connecticut deems what's appropriate to the local health. to the local health departments and probably hospitals, and, you know, so, that's how that is expected to work. Yeah. Mike, did I answer your full question?
Yeah, yes, you did, thank you. Well, actually, I have one more question, and I won't take up much time, but, so I know you have to get the two shots, so is this a one-time vaccine that's supposed to work, or do you have to come back 10 years later and redo it? Do we know that?
We don't know that. We don't know that.
I haven't heard anything about that.
Yep.
This virus is too new to know that yet, part of it being whether or not the virus will mutate.
Some of the new news that's coming down from the CDC recently is concerning quarantine. As some of you may know, if you've been exposed to somebody that is positive, you really need to quarantine for 14 days. But the CDC has been under pressure, because other countries have been using a different day count to really keep people home when they're, when they're most contagious, trying to get people back to work, you know, there are many strategies. So the other two ways that someone can quarantine is stay home for 10 days, no effects, or no symptoms of illness, and they can go, you know, they're out of quarantine, or seven days in quarantine, where after the fifth day, you would be tested, and if the test comes back negative on, you know, after the seventh day, then you are no longer in quarantine. Of course, there are risks associated with those other quarantine measures. State Health Department is working to get guidance documents out there, but, you know, it's, there's a lot of back and forth concerning, you know, basically concerning that, because some people want to be out of quarantine in seven days. But I suppose the best approach would be risk-based. If you work in a hospital, or if you're working in a long-term care facility, it's best if you stay home for 14 days, so.
I can tell you that I had one coworker who was home, her husband was positive and symptomatic, and then tested and found to be positive, and her daughter, who lives on campus at Southern, was not symptomatic when she had been home for a weekend, and then tested because her father was positive and was found to be positive, and then became symptomatic, but that was way after the fact, so they don't think it's that she brought it home to him, they think she got it from him.
Right.
But then my coworker, then the daughter came home to not be on campus, and then my coworker got it. But once she knew she had been exposed, because she works at the hospital, she stayed out of work waiting for testing to come back.
Right.
And she just got her negative back from her husband when she had to be tested for her daughter, and then she was already feeling ill before she had her own test done, and then seven days after that test, or actually, excuse me, 10 days after the test is when it would be okay to go back to work, but she was still having symptoms, so she kept herself out longer, but she ended up out of work for over three weeks.
Yeah.
And she was a, for lack of a better term, mild case of, you know, flu-like symptoms. She luckily didn't get thicker than that, and she still was out of work for over three weeks, so it is, you know, it's a rough thing for people, and for their households, her household was turned upside down for over a month.
And if you're exposed, and you've been home that 14 days, and then somebody else comes into the house that's positive, the clock starts over, you know?
Yes, exactly.
Quarantine period, so you can be home a lot longer than two weeks even.
Yeah.
So that's pretty much it on the emergency planning. Enid, do you have any other questions or anything?
Nope, nope, thank you. It's because, you know, you don't believe how many people all of us see, and we can disseminate some of this information.
Yep.
You know, I mean, only, only because other people, you just don't know the rumors that go around, so.
Yeah.
The live sacrifice.
Fortunately, be careful how many people you're actually seeing, because remember, we can disseminate a lot more than information.
You know what, if people were as good as I, as my husband and I are, we don't go anyplace. When I go to the big white, let's say I knew Mary's car or license plate, I don't go in looking for Mary anymore, I just buy as quickly as I can and get out the door, so, you know. And we only had one.
I'm back to trying to do on-line shopping.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we do Hanukkah, you probably know that, and I just give checks, or send them an Amazon gift card, because I'm not going in the stores, that's for sure, you know, you just don't know, so it's crazy. Hopefully, it'll be over by April, I'm hoping, May. Anyway, so, thank you Nancy for the invitation.
Sure. If you want those numbers, I can dig them up for you, do you think you need them for the town council meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Because we're not asking, you know, if Ken comes out with all the stuff that he has to, he's very good about that.
Yep.
And if they have questions, I'll send them to you.
There you go, okay.
Or just, or just make up the numbers.
Okay.
No, I would never do that, so you don't have to worry. Alrighty, thanks, thank you guys.
Are we moving on to budget next?
Absolutely.
All right. The budget is very simple. Barb sent you the health department primary programs and services organizational chart. We haven't updated the performance metrics yet, but I just wanted to show you what essentially it looks like. Goals and objectives, this, like, again, this is mostly last year's stuff, so we're gonna have to update this, and a lot of this gets updated with the first selectman. I put down my thoughts, and basically, he'll say, nah, we're gonna do this, you know, because he just, he's steering the ship, so.
All right, I do have a question on the budget stuff.
Okay, on the numbers you're talking about.
The actual numbers themselves.
Okay, there you go.
All right, so I think it is page two, page one, I don't know. It is on the revenue line, the second line where it is health department grants revenue.
Yep.
Why is that now nothing? Why has the revenue budget for grants been taken out?
That line, I put down the grants on the last page. Where it says health department grants revenue under 560. This, this is just a template that Heidi gave me to fill in, and I, those numbers there, I'm not exactly sure, I'm not certain how she wants me to do this, because some of the, the money that's coming in, the 78, what is it, whatever thousand dollars that we're getting in these grants, it's a wash, it's gonna be paid out as much as it's coming in, it's a, so I'm not certain how to indicate that in the grant, that's a problem, so, yep.
Okay, I, it just, I didn't notice it all the way on the end like that, so it just kind of like, hmm, that seemed kind of strange.
Yeah, I don't, and also, if you'll see, right, if you're on the last page and you look up under revenue, and then you look down to, it says Board of Finance, it looks like $30,000, I don't know why that's there, and I asked Heidi, and she says, you know, I don't know either, but it's the Board of, I don't know what that plan was, so I didn't mess with it, I just left it, and I just put down essentially, how much money the revenue's coming in for food licenses, and I just took the numbers that we agreed on at the last meeting and plugged them in, as simple as that. And then, the other part of the grant, which is like on page two, which is, this is budget health department expenditures, everything is essentially the same, except, and I'll need you guys to take a peek at this, look at under health operating expense line item, it's 153390. I need to make that about $600 rather than the 570, because, and that was a mistake on our end, I put in the wrong number, and that's for department.
Wait, health operating expense, where on here, which Excel line is it?
Okay.
Number 83.
Oh, okay, because I was looking at 41, and that was way higher, okay.
If you still have it on your computer, it's, it should be.
Okay, now I got it, yep.
Yep. So, first, first one, you're saying 84 department membership subscriptions and stuff, instead of 70, you want it to be 600 to $30 higher?
That's it, because we weren't able to contact all these organizations to see if they're going up a little higher, and so, because of that, I thought we would just put 600 bucks down, that should cover it.
All right. The only other question that I had was, we had had in the 2021 budget, $800 under that same exact category for mileage.
Yeah.
But we still have it 21 to 22 as the same amount, and you have a note that says increased due to per-mileage cost increase in driving distances.
Yep, so what happened there is that we, for the budget that we're in right now, Matt lived, like, a long way away, and he had to come in an hour to do, to work on the weekends during the summer, and so we had, that's what, so now he doesn't, because he lives in Branford, which means that we're saving money because of that, and, so, that's why we didn't change it.
Okay.
It was a wa, you know, in that situation, it was a wash, but we didn't really change the budget at all, you know, we, just a little bit more for the subscriptions, and that, and that's pretty much, that's pretty much it.
Okay. All right. Okay, so at this point, we need to, does anybody have any other questions pertaining to the put forth budget by Nancy?
Nope.
Okay, all right, so we will need to vote on the budget, I will motion to approve the budget with the additional $30 on that line item we just spoke of, which was.
Yep.
In that department subscriptions.
Yep.
So at this point, second.
Chris Davis second.
Okay. All right, so, all right, so everybody's, Nancy, obviously, your vote.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
Even though you are a voting member.
Yep. Sorry about that.
Not a problem, not a problem, okay, so, let it be known, we have voted unanimously to approve the budget as put forth on the documents that we have been sent with the additional $30 into that fees and subscriptions area.
Right.
The last item on the unfinished business, we will table for this evening, the annual report discussion, as Nancy has indicated before the meeting, that she was unable to get some of the information put together for us, so we will just put that into our next meeting. Nancy, is there any other new business that we need to discuss at this point in time?
Uh, no, the only, my only thought is, everything is moving fast and furious at the state level with the vaccine, and I don't know if you wanted me to call you in a week or two, did the board want to have another mini-meeting before, before next month? What is your thought on that?
Um, well.
I'd be for a mini-meeting, if you're, just asking for people's opinion.
What exactly would you be looking for opinion-wise?
I mean, I could report out on exactly what we're doing in the town, you know, we're having, and I would know more from where the state is on what their, what the plan is. It's, you know, it's, I know that you guys don't get directly involved, it's a nice to know what's happening, and I have no other way to share it with you unless we have a meeting, or I can just kind of call you and ask for a meeting, or you can call me if you want to, Chris, I just wanted to put it out there, that's all, I didn't want to just like, not mention it.
Okay.
This is, this is Mary, my question would be, what would the purpose of that other than keeping us informed be, because by the charter for what this Board of Health does or is about?
Yep.
Is there anything that would be changed by us knowing in a couple of weeks versus being, having a summary given to us at the next monthly meeting?
Right.
Because if we're just gonna listen to you describe what's happened.
Okay, that's true.
That could happen all at once, in my thought, I don't think that there's anything that would change by us knowing it any sooner, or that would be up for deliberation.
Right, that, that is true.
I actually, I actually agree with that, if there, if there is something in the deliverable section of what you need to do for town employees, or anything like that, that is open for discussion, or open to interpretation, that you feel that you would need the board's approval for, or at least some kind of guidance or additional thought processes behind making a decision. I certainly don't have a problem withholding a special meeting to do that.
Okay.
If it's just purely for informational purposes, we can do one of a couple of things, either one, we can just hold everything until the next meeting, which obviously would be in the beginning of January, or in fact, we can actually even, just, you can send an email if anybody on the board, obviously, including Enid, is extremely interested in how things are going to happen, which, obviously, us reading it and you knowing it and living it, we might interpret things a little bit differently than the way you did.
Right.
So us reading it might not be the, the best way to figure it out either.
Right, alright.
So I would say at this point, unless, you know, somebody else has an objection, that we will table it until the next meeting, and again, if you need some kind of input from us, whether, again, it's a thought process, or whatever the case may be, you know, please feel free to reach out to me, and, you know, we can certainly try to put together a meeting for, you know, however long we feel we need to, to kind of discuss whatever the items that you feel we need to discuss are, Nancy.
Okay, I see it as more as an FYI.
Right, no, I understand, I totally understand.
Okay. Well, that's all I have on my end.
All right. Does anybody else have anything they feel they need to discuss or anything at this point in time?
Nope.
No, not really, if it's just an FYI, I agree, I mean, there's no difference between two weeks and four weeks.
Okay.
I know I'm gonna be at Phase Three, being in my mid-40s, and I'm not, and I'm healthy, so.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that sounds great. All right, so at this point in time, I will call to motion adjournment at 6:53 this evening.
Second.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody coming, or obviously tuning in, as they say, and look forward to everybody having a happy and healthy holiday time, and speak to everybody in the middle of January.